For the Planning Commission's Citizen Advisory Committee, City of Lowell, for the regular meeting on Monday, October fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen, seven P. M., please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, in whose degree it is public, for which it stands, one nation, America, in whose sovereignty and justice are all.
Thank you. Sue, roll call.
Commissioner Ken Walden.
Here.
Commissioner Chambers is absent. Commissioner Ellis.
Yep, I'm here.
Commissioner Hidula.
Here.
Commissioner Plank.
Here.
Commissioner Schraven.
Here.
And Commissioner Barker.
Here.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as written?
Motion to approve the agenda.
And is there support?
Support.
And is there discussion? Any additions?
A motion to approve absence.
I thought Sue already said she was... You already commented.
We still need a motion to change the case's absence.
Do I have a motion to approve the absence?
Yes.
And support?
Support.
Okay.
All in favor of approving the absence?
Aye.
Aye? And all in favor of approving the agenda then as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And approved. Approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, September ninth, our regular meeting, do I have a motion?
Do I have support? Or should I just support that?
I'll make the motion to approve it. Yeah, that's good. We have approval. Any discussion of the minutes? Hearing no discussion, all in favor of accepting them, please say aye.
Aye.
They are accepted. Any public comments that are... Anything that's not on the agenda as of this point? As always, whenever there is an agenda on the item that we are discussing publicly, you always have comment time, so please feel free to make comments as appropriate when, okay? Thank you. There is no old business, new business. A is non-conforming, single-family residential options. I'm gonna turn that over to Andy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is something that did not... My screen will turn on. Oops. Let me get this set up. So this is something, this is kind of a new issue that came up a couple of weeks ago. There it is. Ah, here we go. Thank you, Sue.
Uh huh.
So there's a block in the city which is highlighted right down here. This is the north side of Main Street. There's about six parcels between Smith and Amity, just east of the railroad tracks. And so they're highlighted in pink here on the map. And these six parcels, these are all single-family residential homes. And they've been used as that for a long time. They're all within the C-three highway business, commercial district. And I bring this to you because we received an email from somebody who was looking to, I believe, purchase one of these residences a couple of weeks ago. And they had some questions, well specifically the lender had some questions. As doing their due diligence, they realized that this is zone commercial. Single-family homes are not a permitted land use in the C-three district. And so the question was, okay, so let's say hypothetically this home could catch on fire, something terrible happens, then it gets destroyed, can they rebuild it? And so in looking through the zoning ordinance, the answer is kind of no. There's... And it's not really clear in the ordinance. There's language in here that talks about non-conforming structures and non-conforming uses and non-conforming lots and all these things. So in this case, because the use is not permitted within the district it's located in, but the use has been there for a long time, we would consider that a non-conforming use. It's a very common thing that happens. Every single city, village, township, county, whatever, in the state of Michigan has single... has non-conforming uses of some sort here. City Lowell has dozens of them, I'm sure. And these are a few of them right here. And so the issue, of course, is that if this city and if the ordinance says, no, you can't rebuild these if it's destroyed, and it's gonna be... It's gonna be a tough sea of variance to rebuild them, and it's certainly not a guaranteed process anyways, then the lenders get a little shy and they're like, well, I'm not gonna, you know, I'm gonna give you a mortgage for this property if something happens and then I'm left... If the bank is left holding, you know, this... All this money is on this property, it's worthless now if it's got destroyed. And so in checking into this, I exchanged a bunch of emails with them, Mike and Sue, looking at some options on how to deal with this kind of situation. And so that's what we're going to talk about tonight. And we put together a memo that I think you received in your email late last week. I'll be kind of read through it. So that kind of is background on what we're thinking about here. There are a bunch of different ways that we can deal with this, and each of them kind of come with some of their own challenges. You know, probably the most obvious solution to this issue would be to just, okay, well let's just rezone the properties to some residential district, right? Because then, okay, if we zone them R-two, let's say, that would be no problem in theory, right? Because this, you've got residential use and residential zone, they become conforming, that's all true. The issue with that, of course, is that whenever we rezone property, we look at the city's master plan, which kind of guides us in terms of growth and development and how land should be used moving forward. Of course, looking in the city's master plan, this... These properties, their block basically is zoned downtown, commercial, central business district type of area. So for long-term, you know, the master plan indicates that this is going to be commercial at some point. And so if we're going to... That makes it difficult, from my perspective, as a planner, to rezone these properties to a strictly residential district because it's the opposite of what our master plan is telling us should happen here. Now, the master plan doesn't say that we need to just, you know, bulldoze everything and clean the slate and let it go for a commercial development, right way. But the plan suggests that over the long term, over thirty years, as these properties change hands or as they... As conditions change or eventually some commercial entity is gonna come and buy up these lots and wants to build a commercial business there, then we would enable that through zoning. So they're zoned commercial right now. They're planned commercial, but the use on them is residential. So there are other, less obvious solutions. One of them that I put forth here, and number one, would be to rezone properties to this neighborhood business district. And your zoning map contains precisely zero properties within the city of Lowell that are zoned neighborhood business. The zoning ordinance has this district written out, so when you go through the district chapters of the zoning ordinance, you're gonna see districts called neighborhood business and has standards for what kind of uses can go there and setbacks and building height and all that typical stuff. There's... It just doesn't appear anywhere on the map. So this would be kind of a two-step process. One step would be, we would allow for single-family homes in this district, and then two, we would rezone the properties to neighborhood business. So that would be consistent with the master plan because it still enables the commercial uses on the property that the master plan envisioned over the long term. And it would solve the non-conforming issue because it would be conforming if we permit single-family homes in this district. This district in the zoning ordinance is intended to be a fairly small-scale, commercial-type of district. So you think about C-three, which is on the west end of town, west end of Main Street, that's all kind of highly commercial, it's where all the fast food joints and car dealers and stuff like that are all in C-three, which is fine, but with lots that are smaller like this, the thinking is that there may be a few limited areas in town where you kind of a small, smaller scale, less intense, less auto-oriented, commercial district could make some sense. This is one... One series of properties where I think that could make some sense too.
If we did a... If we did this C-one, we would not have any other areas that would be considered C-one at this point.
Correct. And that's one of the benefits of doing that would be that you would affect nothing else. No other properties would be affected by doing that, because if we changed the zoning of these properties from C-three to the C-one, then because there's no other C-one zone in the city, there's... The effects are very limited to only...
It's only... The effect would be... Yeah, just no...
Sort of.
Simple.
But it becomes... It's all a little area now. We could eventually, in future, rezone other properties to C-one, which could also make some sense, but for now, this would be limited, you know, the effects would be very, very limited as opposed to some of the other things that we're talking about, which would have much more wide-ranging effects moving forward.
And this would effectively solve the homeowners' problems?
As long as we allow for single-family dwellings in that district.
In that district.
Yes. So right now it doesn't, it just allows for a few limited retail types of things.
And they would also then become conforming versus non-conforming.
Correct. And that's what we're... That's... That would be the intent here, would be to make them conforming so that it takes something and comes off, right? So you can, you know, property owners can... Or they will have a easier time selling the properties, making improvements, expansions, modifications, things like that. That all becomes much easier when you're conforming instead of non-conforming.
I have a question.
Yeah.
What is the... Or if there is any history on why it was put into the C-three category?
I honestly don't know. It's been that way for as long as I've been around. The master plan that was adopted in two thousand and seven shows this property as being commercial, or I think part of downtown. So I can't... I don't know historically why.
I think lots on either side of Lowell are commercial.
Yeah, and that's...
I suspect.
That's kind of my guess, is that these really are the only residential properties up front on Main Street here. So if we zoom in on this little snapshot that we have in our report, this is just off of Kent County, right along Main Street here, there's... I mean, this is all commercial, going all the way, all this down here, it's all commercial. So this is the light right here, Hudson. So we've got New Union's here, this is the... This is the... Actually, parking lot, some other businesses down here. This is the Village Fireplaces right here. I don't remember what this is, but as you can see, I mean, it's all commercial all the way down. And so I guess that would be the project, like, I would keep these four residential lots.
Right.
And what is consistently a commercial downtown district. But specifically, I don't know, because we weren't involved with that designation. It's probably been zoned commercial for decades, I would guess, but I don't know.
So, I mean, by zoning it commercial and then by keeping that zone commercial in the city master plan and so on, I mean, truly those buildings have been there for quite a long while. Was the goal essentially to, you know, like, okay, this last batch of residents, and then those buildings get turned into commercial properties and so on against that?
That's the problem. Again, I don't know, but I would probably... That certainly could have been the thinking when you have this much commercial all along here. Like, it's not unreasonable to say that, look, this is a long Main Street, M-21, a lot of traffic, you're surrounded by commercial on all sides. Eventually, some commercial developers kind of want to buy a couple of these and...
Then it would still enable that to happen.
Yeah. Yeah, so by rezoning them to the C-one neighborhood business, that would enable that to happen. It'd be a little more... The amendment would be a little more complicated because we'd be putting a brand new district in place. We'd have to go through the district language pretty carefully to make sure that it's enabling what we wanted to enable, both in terms of residential development and in terms of commercial development, okay?
And the C-one, in effect, do that though?
Yes.
What a lot of both.
Yeah, I don't think it does now. We could certainly make it... Also, at the same time that we're rezoning these, we could work through a tax amendment that would just add single-family dwelling as a permitted use in that district. Yeah. There are a couple of other options that are a bit simpler that I wanted to go over with you two.
Sure.
So one of them would be, instead of rezone it to a different district, we just permit single-family homes in C-three. But that would just be a one-line tax amendment in this C-three district to allow single-family dwellings. It would be consistent with the master plan as well, it would be a much simpler process. The only hang-up you would have to consider is that everything zoned C-three would also then become eligible for single-family homes, which would be basically everything all the way down Main Street on both sides of downtown to some degree.
Which is something that in the master plan, we are not looking to do.
Not really. There are a couple of areas in the master plan, both on the east and west side of downtown, where the plan designates these mixed-use areas, which could conceive, you know, conceivably contain some residential component in addition to commercial uses. So it wouldn't be totally... I mean, it's not like completely bonkers of an idea. But yeah, so we would obviously have to think through, excuse me, some of the implications of that. So I think the most of the west Main Street, in particular, the highest and best use of those properties is generally gonna be commercial, not a single-family. But again, if you're...
Why sell anything if you're gonna just like have a commercial district and say, well, I can't sell a single-family home, so...
Right.
Why...
Right. I like the idea of...
Pretty disparate, you know?
Yeah. I mean, I like the idea of doing the C-one, the first proposal, from the standpoint that we don't know how many other properties in the C-three district would be housing. I mean, we don't know that necessarily. So I think... I think that that's one of the reasons behind it. Whereas if there's... If there are more properties in the C-three that would like to get rezoned to the C-one, then we can take a look at those properties as a, you know, as they come up, because they're gonna come up in lots.
And you're gonna have, you know, highest and best use, Mike.
Yes, sir. Come on up, please. Give us your name, please, and address.
Ryan Dodson, one-two-two-seven-five Menpearson Street. I'm here in regards to that six-one-seven Lowell Main Street property. I think the highest and best use for it is residential. Their longstanding structures have been there a long time, and all the homeowners' property values are actually coming down because of the zoning, because resale on them is dropping. So I think, you know, if we're able to sell a few, fix them up, bring property values up, I mean, it would only help that area. So... That C-one, if that works and you have a mixed-use and you can have the property as residential or commercial, I think that would be even better too, so...
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Come on up. Please give us your name and address.
David Stephan. I don't know, I'm in Alto, maybe seven-ten Altona. But I have questions to the same residents. In talking about these different zones, are there tax implications depending on what zone decision is made? And then is there... And this is just... I'm just asking questions that are evaluated. And then are there building or business limitations between C-one and C-two and C-three? Meaning what type of businesses... If you made C-one and it was both business and residential, would there be limitations then? What type of business could be put next door to a residential in that, so...
I think I can answer the second part of that, and correct me if I'm wrong here, Andy. As far as the limitations for businesses, when we... If we adopt C-one, we would put in whatever limitations it would entail.
Okay.
That would be part of it, and then it obviously has to go to City Council for adoption, correct?
Yes.
And then your first question, the taxing...
Yeah, I would defer to the assessor on the first question. I don't know that I'm qualified to answer that part of it, but for the second part, yeah, I would agree that because we have potentially... Because again, if we make all four, five, or six of those properties, let's say we do the C-one thing, so we can... Single-family homes or businesses, there could be one or two property owners that say, you know what, I want to sell this to somebody else, or they want to turn it into some kind of, you know, of a commercial business, which then that can introduce issues, obviously, if you have this commercial business, there can be parking issues and more traffic or hours and lengths and all this other stuff. So the Planning Commission would have to pretty carefully evaluate that part of it when they be drafting the ordinance. I think the intent of the neighborhood business district is to be a neighborhood business district, so we're not talking about huge, intense, super great, high-traffic types of things. You'd be more limited retail or offices or stuff like that, just kind of guessing at this point. Actually, we don't have to guess until we can see what's here now. But that's the intent. And the other thing that we have to keep in mind is that these are pretty small lots, only sixty-six-foot lots, so you're not gonna have like a huge...
Right.
You know, again, some of these large developments that take up a city block are their, you know, particular area.
How would they be able to combine the lots and then build something bigger?
Yeah, I mean, right now, somebody could, in theory, come in and buy the block, knock everything down, and put a big old commercial enterprise of some sort there that would be consistent with C-three. That's conceivable, it hasn't happened yet, obviously. But it could. And so I think part of what the intent of that C-one would be, would be to limit the intensity of what kind of commercial you would have there, so you're not being totally out of character with neighborhoods. Because this is something where, in the future, you could see that in some other areas of the city when you're in a neighborhood, there's like a little, you know, not to sound cliched, but a corner store kind of a thing, where you want a little bit of commercial, a little node here, there, with just one or two properties. So you don't want it limited, you don't want it quiet, you wouldn't want a lot of traffic, you don't want it to serve kind of the main people who live in that area, not from over southwest Michigan.
We also, if we did do a C-one, we would have to have a public hearing, correct?
Yes, so please, if we were to rezone the property to C-one, we'd have to hold a hearing, and everybody would be notified at seven-three-hundred feet of these properties, including the ones that own it now. So there would be certainly a public...
And also City Council, which also has a public hearing.
They don't have to be hearing, but it would go to City Council, right?
And they have to.
Yes.
Perfect.
Those are also, because there are traffic implications, if they do it that, if they were to make that commercial, what that would do to the traffic in that area?
Yeah, I mean, that's possible, so... I mean, honestly, because it's on Main Street, I don't think that...
Versus residential, you have, you know, a couple cars a day versus...
Right, so...
Four businesses in there.
Right, so certain kinds of residential, or I'm sorry, of commercial uses have obviously very different traffic generation numbers. So a gas station is, you know, thirty cars an hour, whereas an office might be five cars an hour. So we would certainly look at that as part of the overall process. When we're looking at what kinds of businesses should go in there, part of it, it's gonna be viability, so we're not gonna allow a commercial use there that would require ten acres because it doesn't make any sense in that regard. But the other part of it is that we would have to make sure that whatever that is in terms of traffic and all the off-site impacts that it can have, would have to be compatible with residential uses as well, because it's something that would be going in a residential area primarily. Thank you.
Thanks. And there'll be multiple questions, I'm sure, so we're gonna work through the options first.
Sure.
And then feel free to ask questions. Don't hesitate, okay? You wanna talk about number three?
So number three is, well, I've kind of talked about that already first, so this is probably the simplest... The simplest one would just be rezone R-two and be done with it. So again, there's still a public hearing and notice procedure, but nothing has to be done to the text of the ordinance, you just change it to R-two. So all of the commercial options, that would be off the table for that... For those properties. And it'd be subject to the same typical residential limitations that every other, you know, every other typical city block and local is subject to.
Except for that becomes the only block in the C-three district, what it's...
It becomes the only block in that stretch, in that along Main Street, basically, until they get way out to the east end of the city, if it's zoned residential. And that doesn't bother me as much, but what would bother me is that it would be fairly inconsistent with the master plan.
Exactly.
So the city's master plan clearly illustrates that these are commercial properties or downtown mixed-use type of properties. So if we rezone most of that block to R-two, it would be inconsistent with that, so then we'd be looking at... You could still do it, but then we have to amend the master plan first, which, again, can be done, but then that's a four-month process probably, and then you're tacking another month or two on after that to get the zoning accomplished, so this becomes a long...
Next year.
Process. Yes, yeah, then it's maybe done by March or something.
Does that actually play a factor or anything, though? Like, if you were to get on the phone with the lender and told them that that was the plan, would they still be... Would the buyer then be able to go for a year until that?
I don't know, I mean, conceivably, um...
I would say, well, it's not a solid start, it's still...
Yeah, I mean, it would have to be effective, I would guess, before, you know, be guaranteed by...
Because we could change our mind.
Yeah. Well, there is uncertainty in the process, that's part of it, is that the more steps you have in front of the Planning Commission or Council, that from an applicant's perspective, then you introduce uncertainty in the process whenever you have a review and a discretionary decision in front of someone.
Or...
Are you gonna hurry it?
There is one more option...
One more option here?
That I want to get to, which is a little... It's more complicated for you, but it's probably simpler for the people who would live there, because they don't have to do anything. But that would be to simply amend the non-conforming residential provisions of the zoning ordinance. So like I said, now, residence... For non-conforming uses, the language in there talks about non-residential, non-conforming uses. It doesn't talk about residential, non-conforming uses. So it says, if you're non-conforming, non-residential use, then you can't rebuild, but you can go to council and get a variance or some kind of special approval from the ZBA, which is council, and then you could rebuild. So we could amend this section of the zoning ordinance that deals with non-conformities and basically just liberalize the whole thing and make it easier to either rebuild or remodel by this so that the non-conforming use issue would be taken care of. And I'm inclined to suggest that we do this anyways, because I'm not comfortable with the idea that if one of them... If somebody lives in... Lives there now, and I forbid their house burns down, then we have to tell them that you just have to move?
Well, not only that, but if there was a Miller property in a C-three in a different area, they still... Even if we changed it to C-one, if we don't do this, that other property still is that perfect. So we're on the east side of Main Street, just an example.
Right, yeah, so and that's what applies to everybody else. Anybody that has a non-conforming use, if they're residential and the street is not a zoned residential, they're subject to this issue here. Now, I don't think we have a lot of those left.
Right.
But there might be a couple.
Yeah.
And so this is something that we can do now... There's kind of two parts with the non-conformities. You have non-conforming buildings, which would be like you don't need a setback or something like that. And then you have a non-conforming use, where your building itself meets the setbacks, but the use itself doesn't comply with the district. So most ordinance says that if you're a non-conforming building, so if you don't need a side or rear or front yard setback and your house burns down, you can rebuild it, but you have to move it such that it complies with all those requirements. And a lot of them say that if you're a non-conforming use, you can stay there indefinitely, burn down whatever, you build it back up, and you can continue indefinitely until it changes, then you can't change it back. So this is something that through amending this part of the zoning ordinance, we could fix to... Again, it should, in theory, would satisfy the lender if we could say, yes, it's not conforming, but yes, they would be allowed to rebuild it, because this is the section that would enable that. Now, they would have to realize that those homes could have some kind of setback issue that I don't know about right now, in which case, again, that all comes back into play, they could still rebuild it, they'd have to move it, which, to get in the foundations and stuff, can be really expensive and huge headache, but it's possible, whereas now it's not. So number four is something I would suggest we do anyways, and I guess the question to me that I'll put to you is, do you want to do number four? And if so, do you want to do it in conjunction with a different owner at one time, or have it a multiple-step process?
Seems peculiar. Maybe number four is the... What I'm referring to, the grandfather clause, if it was residential... It was residential. If that's what you can still do, I mean, is this, number four is that kind of like that?
Yes, so that's, when I say non-conforming, that's what I'm talking about, is things that are grandfathered. So in zoning, obviously, because we're talking about permanent buildings is when we have, when something is built legally and then twenty years later, we change the rules somehow such that that legally built thing doesn't follow the rules anymore. We don't start writing tickets every day, because that would be crazy. So we just say that, okay, you're grandfathered, because you were legal at one point, but now you're not. But that's okay, we'll let it go. And so that's what this does.
But if it burned down, couldn't they just rebuild the way it was?
Not right now. And that's the part that I struggle with.
Anywhere in the city hall? Because my garage is like one foot off the lot line and I know there's setbacks, it's like.
Yeah, so if you're, now, you would be allowed to rebuild the garage, but we'd. If the whole thing burned down, we'd make you move it two feet or whatever, and then you get it. So it means no setbacks too.
But we can.
That part's not unusual to me.
Without breaking another rule.
Yeah, well, exactly. So if you get to this point where you're going to move it this way and violate this rule, and then move it that way to violate some other rule, then we'd have to come to the ZBA.
Because the house is one way.
For a variance. So, I mean, it gets really messy when you get into that level of detail. And so that part, if your setback isn't right and we'd make you move it if the whole thing burned down, that is not unusual at all. And so I would suggest that we keep some of that in there. But the part where we're talking about not allowing the property to be used at all for that purpose in any circumstances, is where it gives me a little bit of.
It doesn't make any sense. Wasn't my house now like, is that my house?
Yeah.
Does some ordinance?
Yeah, now you have to sell it and then you got to go move and buy a house somewhere else. So what a lot of ordinances have that deal with non-conforming uses, then it says, okay, this can be a house for never, never, never. But like if you just give up on it and move out, or you sell it to somebody else and you move out, and they do nothing, the house sits vacant for like five years. Then somebody comes in and wants to get a new COO and move in, then we say, hold on, timeout, this is sitting empty for umpteen years. Now, you know, there's a period at which those rights sunset, usually it's a year or two. Same thing if you have, what we see sometimes also is if you have a residentially zoned property that has a commercial business, I had like a neighborly restaurant in it years ago or something. It goes away and sits vacant for a while. And then they come back in, well, you can only restart that use if it's sat empty for a while if you're conforming with all those provisions of the ordinance. And so there could be an instance in that situation where it's been empty and vacant and dilapidated for so long, that they wouldn't let you restart the old non-conforming use, because use is since gone away. So if use goes away, then you can't start up a new one.
With use of that empty.
Yeah, unless it complies. But this one, the use would continue right up until the date of the, you know, whatever terrible thing happened. And then they wouldn't want to rebuild it right away, so there wouldn't be a lapse in making a time, in that continuity of use. If this is making any sense, it hopefully is. So those are kind of the four options that we outlined. Any one of these by itself would take care of this in the short term. But I guess the question for you is, do you want to deal with it in the long term as well? And just fix it once and for all? If so, I would suggest we do number four in combination with some other one probably, at least number four by itself, but probably.
Is number four more like the grandfather clause, or was, you still have it?
Yeah, we would basically make it much more restrictive than in person.
I don't like to change here, because someone, without knowing the history of why someone made it, obviously there's common sense, but.
This just allows, I think this allows for a disaster. You know, fire or something along that line. And the fact of the matter is, is that even though it was non-conforming, you ought to be able to still use your property the way you were using it.
Yep.
Regardless of what happened to it. So to me, doing number four is something that we should do, because not only does it affect these six properties that we're looking at tonight specifically, but anybody else.
That has that issue.
Which right now, anybody could have that issue. I mean, that's the bad part about that. And then secondarily, I feel strongly that we ought to take a look at that number one or the rezoned property to C1. Because, and the reason why I think that way is it allows these properties to become conforming. And there may be other properties in that same situation in a different area. And we can then take a look at making that area a C1 as it comes up, if it comes up. It may never come up. But in addition to that, we're being faithful to the master plan by saying, hey, look, you can still have commercial businesses here. That's what that area was. I mean, all up down Main Street basically is C3. So we're not taking away the right to have commercial, but what we're saying is, hey, it's got to be reasonable commercial, it's got to be neighborhood-type commercial. So to me, it makes sense to do that versus using permitting residential uses in C3. Why? We don't want, we don't want them there to begin with according to master plan, so why are we going to permit it? And then two, or three, rezoning the properties to R2. Well, it was zoned commercial to begin with for a reason. And if you're going to change it, you ought to have at least keep some of that commercial, which the first one does. So those would be my, those are my thoughts, but.
Well, the first one fits more with master plan and everything too, right?
Yes, yes.
And it gives us the elevated rate-up wording that allows us to, like you said, use as a catch-all for other things that affect in the future.
Right, right.
I think the first one also protects the current homeowners, so that they're not losing any.
Exactly.
Value in what they have.
In fact, it actually makes it better, because it makes them conform now, instead of not conforming, which to me is, that's very valuable.
So for the homeowners to come in now.
Right.
Before it gets done, there's not as much value for the homeowner, but if they're conforming, then.
But also immediately solve their problems, even without four. Even without four, I mean, four is just kind of a overarching type of thing, is the way I view it.
Yeah, like I say, we could, you could solve the immediate problem by doing any one of these by itself.
Right.
And nothing else. But if you do the one and four, then yeah, I mean, one would certainly solve the immediate issue. Four, you're right, it's a global change that would affect every property in the city that has any kind of non-conforming status attached to it, which is like all of them, but it's more than a couple.
So four, four would cover everything.
It's an overarching.
So you don't have to do two, you just got to do.
Well, you got to, well, you can do both of them. Number one changes the district, and I highly recommend that in this case. Because number one, it sets the precedent too. If there are other ones on the east side of Main Street specifically, there's a number of streets down there that have residential houses. And it's mixed, so, you know, this could come up again.
And I think that with number one, if you don't do number one, it seems like someone who owns a property in that section still could potentially be losing value, because.
There's still not. There's still not.
You're going to be, yeah, you're always going to be non-conforming and you're kind of under a guise of, well, when is something going to change that we're going to be forced out to become commercial type of thing, so.
Any other thoughts, commissioners? I would recommend that we charge Andy with coming up with a rezoning for, to the R1 and then also coming up with a wording to amend the non-conforming residential use provision, number four.
So you meant, you meant C, the C1?
Yeah, C1 and also the number four.
What is the difference between C1 and C3? Is there, is there a really large? I just, the uniformity of C3 all along that road, to change that. Whereas if, yeah, I mean, we just do one thing and take care of it.
Yes.
But if we don't have, if we have C3, they would still be non-conforming in some instances.
So C1 we can reform right to make up this.
But they're still non-conforming.
So C1, we're going to write, so we can.
We're going to write, yes, yeah.
So C1 is more restrictive generally than C3 is in terms of the number of different land uses that are enabled in that district. So in C1, as it's written now, and it's not mapped anywhere. But it allows all the office buildings, banks, personal service establishments like barber shops and stuff, retail stores, drugstores, private clubs, fraternal organizations, lodge halls, childcare, utility and public service buildings, accessory buildings and outdoor display of merchandise.
We could run that even more.
Yeah, and then as special uses, it permits commercial greenhouses, funeral homes, veterinary clinics and commercial storage facilities, and that's it.
Commercial greenhouses, is that going to be like a, you're going to have a pot issue?
Now, if you compare that to what's permitted in the C3, C3 does permit a lot of the same things, but it also permits restaurants, driving facilities, indoor recreation like bowling alleys. And then it also permits by special land use, so C1 permitted three different special land uses. C3 permits like fourteen of them. So again, there's just a lot more different stuff you can do in C3 compared to C1. And then in addition, the minimum lot width in C1 is larger, the minimum lot area in C1 is more. Buildings can be bigger, setbacks are greater. So you can use a little bit more of the property, because the lots are smaller and you're more restricted in terms of land use. And so again, this is, I think the intent you might have drafted years ago was have just a limited neighborhood scale commercial node kind of thing. If not, you know, like a restaurant with a drive-through or a, you know, something really active and intense that goes late at night and all these kind of things.
None of the public would get, because they have that, they'd get some input on. I mean, are they going to be happy with the idea of the C1, you know, they're conforming, and everything's great, or is there still going to be some perceived like value to be just fully residentially zoned or, you know, some chance to?
Problem with being entirely residential is it goes.
Yeah.
Right straight against our master plan.
Yeah.
This, the C1 just kind of brings it into the commercial possibility, which it's, which it is right now.
They've been living there for all these years, that way, pretty much.
Exactly, exactly. I mean, right now, somebody could go in there and buy more buildings and whatever they want.
But if we write the C1, we can still make it, it's still not.
They could still rebuild their houses.
Yes, they could still rebuild their house.
Right.
For a residential.
Yeah. But they do conform.
Yeah, do what they're like.
Yeah, and again, it opens it up because.
To the west, what are those two zoned, just for the railroad tracks?
One's C here and here?
Yeah.
They're either, that's a good question. Those are... Actually, zone R3, multifamily residential. And then this one on the corner right here, one, does it say 100? No, I don't know. This one here is on industrial. And then yet all of this is all C3. This one's sixteen. Yeah, this little block right here is all R3.
Mostly because they're kitty-corner, they're Main Street, like really.
I guess, it doesn't really have any frontage on Main Street. But then, when we get down here, this is a bedmaker stuff down here, I think. But everything else, this is C3 and this is all industrial when you get back down here. So yeah, these are residentially zoned right here, these are multifamily residential.
Yeah, their lots don't technically go up to Main Street.
Yes, yeah, they don't have Main Street frontage. And I'm sure a huge reason why these were all zoned, C3 was because of Main Street. I mean, and you can even see, you know, these, historically, these were probably residential at some point too. And this probably was too. You can see with the way the plaques are, you know, the plaid, old plaid and parsonizer in here, these look like old residentially plated lots at some point that have been combined, rezoned, converted to commercial use to capitalize on Main Street frontage. But these, I think there's only five, no, I think this one here is just a through lot. I think this guy owns both all the way at the back. But there's this one, this one, this one, this one and this one. And those have all stuck around and are still residential as we speak. So this would allow them to stay like that. But obviously, if conditions change, then it would also enable those folks to, either those properties to convert to a commercial use as well, so.
Is there a, is there a, to be conforming versus non-conforming, even if they can rebuild? Is it, is there implications, benefits to be conforming versus non-conforming?
Um, yeah, I think it's easier just to do, you know, virtually anything if you're fully conforming. So when you get into, there's a lot of restrictions that would say, okay, well, if you're C3, then you have to do all of these things and you can only have this type of. I mean, it could even be, have implications as far as what kind of accessory buildings they could have, or if they can expand, or if they can put an addition out of their house. All of that kind of stuff can be limited sometimes in non-conforming. We don't do them a lot around, we don't have that many, so it doesn't come up all the time. But in a lot of instances, any kind of expansion, movement, significant modernization or a huge undertaking on a property, a major remodel, it presents a little bit of a obstruction.
Almost invariably too, if you're non-conforming, a bank, mortgage lender, any one of those types of things, immediately it's a red flag for them to really start looking at it even more so than normally.
Well, like I said, that was the genesis of this, was a lender said, hey, we need a letter that says that we can rebuild this thing if it burns down. We looked at the ordinance and said, yeah, we can't do that. And so, you know, that was kind of the start of it. And then we started talking through some ways to deal with it and here we are.
You know, if we, yeah, I have, if we charge Andy with doing the first option or the rezoning the properties to C1, neighborhood business, and then also doing option number four, not only will it come up with the actual ordinances, but also the analysis of good and bad, you know, why it should be done or why it shouldn't be done. So that way we would have, and it would be an open public hearing again, right?
Yes.
So that way we get, I think we get a better look at it. Having these options here gives us at least the options. I like the thing with C1, because I can see it pertaining to other neighbors or other houses in other areas on the eastern side of Main Street particularly. I mean, you could see where that could happen. And even to the extent of those three properties there that are R3, they might be better suited to be in C1. I don't know, I mean, you know, that, and it would be.